Ladies and gentlemen, we want to begin our agenda for the regular special meeting of the Homelessness and Poverty Committee of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I represent District Eight and act as the Chair of this committee. Joined by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Monica Rodriguez, and councilmembers Weisar and Bonin. We've got a lot of speakers today, so we want to roll through as quickly as we can. We'll begin the meeting with general public comment and people who are commenting on multiple items, including but not limited to our last member, Councilmember Kern Price. So if I call you up, you have two minutes to speak. You have one minute on whatever items you signed up for and an additional minute for general public comment. So I'll begin that now. If you'll quickly come to the podium at the center of the room and begin your comments. I have Caleb Havens, Jed Periot, John Mutter, Liz Hirsch.
My dad says I'm wasting my time talking to politicians and people who kind of have their opinions already set, but I'd like to prove them wrong a little bit. I want to make sure everybody here knows that not building homeless solutions costs more money down the road in both courtroom, jail fees, emergency services. Every community that studies this finds it. Every location has its own ups and downs, but the bottom line is, we need to build 100,000 units of housing in 10 years before the Olympics gets here, or people are going to start disappearing in vans, just like they did in Rio, and then we'll never hear from them again. I know that sometimes people have children that are being educated close by to some of these locations that we're going to talk about. Statistically, your kids are way more in danger from what's in your medicine cabinets than what they're going to find on the streets. And I just want to hit the point home that people who are suffering from lack of housing because we're hoarding resources that could prevent that suffering kind of makes us murderers if we can't figure out how to organize our resources better to take care of our neighbors who are most in need because of the systemic racial, religious, ethnic injustices that permeate our culture and that we haven't solved yet that result in homelessness. The number one cause of homelessness is eviction. It's not laziness and it's not addiction. It's people who can't find a place to live that they can afford and don't have power to have their basic needs met. So I hope that everybody who comments can keep compassion in mind and remember that history always vindicates the person who makes the compassionate choice, not the person who hoards resources until their neighbors die. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Jed Periot with the Democratic Socialists of America. So we're here today to talk about potential locations for more temporary shelters across the city. We need solutions. We need immediate solutions right now. We really need, again, as I've said many times, permanent housing is the only solution to homelessness. Everybody in this room should be outraged that Triple H funding has now been cut in half somehow. Now projected 6,000 units of permanent supportive housing as opposed to 10,000? This is true. LA Times, look at LA Times, 6,000 is what is now projected. And so while we're now trying to hide that fact, we are talking about these temporary shelters. And another fact you're trying to hide about the shelter plan is that there is $29 million attached to the Bridge to Home Plan for what you are calling cleanups in public, including the mayor's West Side rep in a meeting last week with a bunch of unhoused folks and myself. He said there were cleanups. We know what that means. It is more police and sanitation sweeps that harass and criminalize the unhoused. And this plan will disproportionately criminalize the unhoused more than it will shelter it. When you look at, for example, Koreatown, which has around 350 unhoused people, the proposed shelter there is going to have roughly 60 to 70 beds. Now think about all the other folks who are not going to get a bed, right? About 290. What do they get in this plan? They get more police and more sanitation sweeps. How is that solving the problem? Just go and talk to the folks on the streets who have to deal with this harassment where police officers literally call them names, throw out all their possessions via bulky item pickups, which are unnoticed, zero notice given, and they literally tell the homeless people that they're doing it to encourage them to change their lifestyle, to go to a shelter, a shelter that is temporary, a shelter that is not the solution at all, and a shelter that has strict rules and will kick them out back to the streets in no time.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm John Mutter. I'm with Ground Game L.A. and DSA. Normally, when I come here, I try and tell you all the effects of sweeps and what's actually happening on the streets since, I mean, you're obviously not there when the sweeps are happening because we are and we never see you or your deputies. So here's what happens when you enforce 5611 in a near-desert climate. This man in Boyle Heights died of heat exhaustion during the heat wave. He was an elderly wheelchair-bound man, said he wanted help getting off the street, but clearly there wasn't enough housing available and enough services available to him. And we obviously don't want people having their tents up during the day. I say "we," the city, certainly, not me. I don't even know where that came from, the fact that you can't have a tent up during the day. I mean, it's 100-plus degrees out and you can't seek shade. Where are you supposed to go? You're supposed to go to the cooling centers or something? Is Laszlo sending vans around, picking everybody up, taking them to the cooling center, making sure they aren't dying? I mean, like, this guy fucking died.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Liz Hirsch. I am a resident of Hollywood and I'm a mother and a teacher. I'm a member of Democratic Socialists of America. I, my sentiments, I would say I largely agree with what's been said by the gentlemen who have spoken previous to me. I wish at this meeting there were more council members. I frankly think it's interesting that the Homelessness and Poverty Committee is restricted to just a handful of you, but regardless, we're here today finally, right? It's been months, right, since one of these meetings was convened, or maybe I missed something. I try to keep on top of this. I do wish that Councilmember Carrats was present today in particular because I know that, you know, there's something in his district that's being planned, and that's good. That's good that there's some type of solution slated. It's not an actual solution, right, as has been said. It's not housing. But the fact that, you know, as other council members do, he's in the process of obstructing proper housing being built, and I'm glad that lawsuit got filed last week against the city council for these pocket vetoes of affordable housing and permanent supportive housing that other voters, you know, have demanded that we address in this city. Sorry if I'm rambling. I don't feel well and I'm so angry, but I just want to say to Carrats, you know, what you did recently to our unhoused neighbors at Point Setia, the kind of consistent harassment and intimidation that has gotten them to clear, that has separated them from the caseworkers who knew them, who were trying to line them up with services and housing, the fact that none of us can find them at this point and they're totally on their own and isolated from one another is no evidence of progress here. And the criminalization that goes on and it just continues to be funded is an absolute shame. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Sister Grace and I'm new to L.A., but I'm not-
Tell me your name.
My name is Sister Grace.
You're not a speaker.
I put it on the thing.
So you have to take your seat and we'll try to figure it out. But thank you. I have David Quatrochi. David, I'm sorry, I'm mispronouncing your name. David Quatrochi? That's you? My apologies. I'm sure that that was not a correct pronunciation.
I'm here as a member of the Democratic Socialists of America and in solidarity with unhoused So in general, too, I'm here to speak against the $29 million allocated. We see that you've bumped up $30 million for shelters to show on record. I'm worried that the president, being said, is always kind of doing the minimum or enough on paper to make it look good. We've seen what police do on the homeless beat. It's a mismatch in terms of like skills and things that they've been trained to do and what actually needs to be done. So if anything, this is perpetuating more violence and more criminalization. You've heard the stats, the number one reason is eviction. I think in this room, we have to start believing that and comprehensive shelter plans are fine in the meantime, but I'd never saw any kind of like robust asking of our unhoused population if that is a good solution. Need to stop assuming we know the reality and what our citizens are dealing with on a daily aspect. Also, there's a quote in the LA Times from our deputy chief of staff, Garcetti, about working with council office on a daily basis, but working with the private sector as well. We've had some pretty incompetent report backs, even from sanitation. I think servicing it out to the private sector is pretty damaging. That's like some forethought that I know you all know, but let's keep it in mind.
Thank you. All right. That closes general public comment. And we won't be taking any more speakers for items. So we will begin our meeting. I know we have a number of speakers on item number one. Items number one, two, three, and four have a number of speakers on them. We're going to try to get two of the issues out of the way and begin the meeting with six, item number six. Get that done and then we can give, have an ample time for the hearing for items one, two, and three. So if we could begin the meeting by reading item number six into the agenda and as that's being read, if the folks from Board of Public Works and Hunter's Point can come forward.
Item six is a Board of Public Works report relative to the Personal Service Contract Amendment with Hunter's Point family for bathroom attendant and monitoring services for the mobile pit stop program.
Thank you. Proceed.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chair, councilmembers, Raul Mendoza here with the Board of Public Works, and I'm joined at the table-
Elise Mattson, CAO.
And we also have some of our partners on this program. Lena Miller, Executive Director of the Hunter's Point family, Dave Bates from Five Keys Schools and Programs, and one of the ambassadors working on the program, Mr. Edward Jenkins. I'll just go briefly into this. We're here today providing an update on the mobile pit stop pilot program, also requesting approval to continue the program and extend our contract with Hunter's Point family for one additional year. This program actually started with a motion introduced by Councilmember Bonin, and it was adopted by your committee back in October 2017 in response to the hepatitis A virus outbreak. The motion directed the CAO to report on how to increase access to public restrooms and explore the concept of a mobile pit stop pilot program modeled after a similar program that was done in the city of San Francisco. So the idea was not only to increase access, but also to ensure that the locations were safe and sanitary, and we could do that by staffing those locations with a bathroom attendant or, like, we like to call them, an ambassador. In December 2017, the CAO reported back to this committee with how this program could be rolled out involving our office in the Board of Public Works as well as the CAO's office, and they analyzed county public health data on the best locations to see where the biggest need was for this type of program. From there, our office and the CAO, we executed a contract with Hunter's Point family for six months. They're the provider that worked on the program and began the program in San Francisco, and they're bringing their experience here to L.A. on how we can be successful. They've subcontracted with Five Keys, who I mentioned, a more local nonprofit who hired and trained the ambassadors who are working on the program. We also couldn't do this without other city departments who are involved, Department of Transportation with some of the parking. We've worked with the Department of General Services on the rental of the portable toilets, and Adele and his staff from the Bureau of Sanitation as it relates to some of the trash pickup, as well as the needle collection that was part of the program. So less than three months after that motion was adopted, we got the program launched in March. We now have a total of eight locations where we're doing this, but I'll turn it over to Elise Mattson of the CAO's office to talk a little bit more about the results and the data that's come about from this.
Thanks, Raul. So the pit stop program is divided into two components that have a total of eight locations that, like Raul was referencing. First, we have pit stop attendants staffing three of the automatic public toilets, the permanent public toilets operated by J.C. Deco, and we have five mobile restroom sites that are composed of attendants and mobile restrooms that are delivered and picked up every day. We chose the eight sites, like Raul said, by working with council office field staff to identify the best location within the hepatitis A hotspot areas, as identified in our first report. Attendants are responsible for enforcing courtesy rules such as time limits and keeping the units and the surrounding area clean. The pit stops are operational from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily, with the exception of our newly opened Venice site, which is open overnight between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. The usage data that we have seen after the first several months of the pilot has been very encouraging for us. The automatic public toilet locations, for those ones, we compared the use, which is the number of flushes, prior to placing the attendants at the bathrooms, and then the usage during the program with the attendants staffing the locations. And the average daily use of the toilets nearly doubled for all three sites. So before the pilot program, the automatic public toilets were seeing between 20 and 60 uses per day, and during the pilot, the automatic public toilets have seen between 80 and 110 average uses per day. For four of the other mobile restroom locations that are currently in operation, we began tracking usage starting at the beginning of the pilot program because obviously there were no toilets at these locations prior to the start of the pilot. Attendants as well as outreach workers from Lhasa have been reaching out to people experiencing homelessness in areas close to the pit stops to let them know about the new restroom that's available to them. And usage has increased incrementally over the total life of the pilot for these four sites. Each location has seen significant daily use averaging between 40 and 70 uses per day. The last of our site, which is our new mobile site in Venice, just opened up in July due to the fact that we had to get a coastal permit to operate the site, but we do know in the first week of operations, Venice saw about 40 uses per night, which is great, especially given that this site is only open eight hours a day and the other sites are open 12 hours per day. So it was very impressive usage. And like Raul was mentioning, two of our eight sites have Sharp's disposal kiosks that the Bureau of Sanitation installed next to the mobile bathroom units. The units were installed in May, and between the months of May and June, 2,300 needles were picked up at just these two kiosks, so we can really see the need there. We're working on currently installing a third kiosk at one of our sites in downtown Los Angeles. We receive weekly and monthly usage and needle collection reports from our nonprofit partners who are here today to talk about the workforce development program and answer any questions that you might have about workforce development or their experience with the program. So with that, I'll leave it to any questions you all might have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there are any comments from our community partners, now would be a good time before we go to Mr. Weisar. If not, that's fine, too.
Hi, my name is Lena Miller. I'm the Executive Director of Hunter's Point Family from San Francisco. I just wanted to say what an honor it is to be able to provide this service in Los Angeles. I think this program has certain very obvious qualities and benefits, is that people have a dignified way to use the bathroom who are in encampments. I also wanted to make sure that I addressed another thing that we see, we've seen in San Francisco, but we're also seeing in Los Angeles in the same way, and that is oftentimes our monitors, you know, not oftentimes, all the time, part of their job description is cleaning not only the unit, but the area surrounding the unit. And what we've seen has been amazing in that people, a lot of the folks in the encampments are asking for brooms and stuff, and they're cleaning up their areas. I think where you can see this most noticeably is in Alvarado. That whole area has been cleaned. It's because the folks who live there started cleaning up. The other thing is the safety element. Our ambassadors bring a sense of safety and a sense of calm wherever they go. And I'm saying I've seen this consistently in every major area that we've been because we're only in the most impacted areas, both in San Francisco and Los Angeles. And just the last thing I want to say is, you know, again, coming from San Francisco, I know sometimes folks want to see local people, right? And so we partnered with Five Keys. Five Keys is also in San Francisco, so we've had a long history with them, and they have a significant base in Los Angeles. So they really had access to make sure we have the same types of population demographics that are staffing these toilets that are all Los Angeles residents, and many of whom, particularly in Skid Row in those areas, grew up in those areas, know the community, and have outstanding relationships.
Great. Thank you so much for that.
Good afternoon. My name is Edward Jenkins. I'm one of the pit stop ambassadors. I'm currently at the Venice Beach location. We just opened it up. How you doing? I'm here to put a face to the ambassadors who actually monitor these units, okay? Little bit about myself. I grew up here in L.A. County, in the city of Compton. I currently reside in south-central Los Angeles, and I've been out of prison for a year now after doing about 31 years, okay? So it was hard for me finding work. Pit Stop allowed me to not only work and function within this community, it gave me a purpose and a reason, something to go to work for every day. I've come to enjoy my time at work. These people are human beings, okay? Homeless, displaced, whatever name you want to give them, they're still human beings. Some of them have mental problems, without a doubt, okay? And sometimes sidewalk psychology is required. However, they're still people, and they need to be humanized as such. As Lena was saying, they feel a sense of security when they come to these units, especially our female clientele, especially at the Venice Beach location, from 10:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning. It's very dark and it's not very hospitable. The current facilities there, they're atrocious, okay? Now, with the implementation of the pit stop, we start seeing a better influx of people. They're coming to know us. They're, we're almost like part of the community now. The women, they love it because they don't have to worry about being mugged, being attacked, someone coming in on them, or filthy places to use the restroom. So they love this thing. As far as the area around it, we clean that place up. We do a good job cleaning that place up. It's not just the toilets, we clean the surrounding areas as well, okay? And the officers, they come by nightly patrol. I've talked to several of them, and some of them, most of them, actually knew what we're about, some didn't, and it was simple explanation of what we were, what we were doing, and they're great. They have regular patrols, they come by all throughout the night, and they keep the peace. The general population around there, since they come to trust us and know us, they are more approachable. We can share the resources with them for housing, for mental stability, for job placement. And not just for them, Pit Stop helps people like me, okay? Because I have a job, I have a future. Because of Pit Stop, I was able to go to Glendale Community College, enroll in there, and I'm now have a major in communication with a minor in psychology. That's because I have this wonderful job with good pay, good benefits. That was not be possible for me to do if it were not for Pit Stop. So it's a good thing. It's a win-win. It's a win-win for the city. It's a win-win for the homeless community. It's a win-win for those of us who's coming out and really need a foundation to build on.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Going for your work on this, I think the results and the preliminary numbers shows that it's been a success. It's a different way of approaching the way we've put out public bathrooms in the past. I think the ambassadors have done a wonderful job in allowing individuals to have some toiletries nearby and have a place where they can feel comfortable going, and that's been the big difference. I know in Skid Row where we've put these bathrooms in the past, they really haven't, many of them haven't turned out, or some of them haven't turned out into being used as toilets, but for other purposes. And now I think the increase in numbers that we've seen speaks to not only the need for more bathrooms in the areas, but also that this is probably the right approach to take. So I have a few questions for CAO. So we don't, or the report's just asking us a recommendation to continue the program, but it doesn't expand it at this point, correct?
That's correct. We were requesting to continue the eight locations and to move money from the unappropriated balance to the Board of Public Works for that purpose.
Okay. And we set aside in the budget some money for bathroom access in this year's homeless budget. And does this, did we? I mean, I think we set aside some money in our homeless budget to have additional bathroom access. Is that money available or not, or does anyone here know about those funds?
I do know that the money in the unappropriated balance is specifically for this program, and if there are other bathroom access items in the homeless budget, I would ask Meg Barclay to comment on those items.
Maybe Meg. Do you know anything?
The funding for bathrooms in the budget is the, specifically for restrooms in the budget is the estimated amount to continue this program. For a year past the pilot program, there are some more general, there's some more general funds in the unappropriated balance for other types of homeless programs, but it's not specified, or to continue to support the Crisis and Bridge Housing Fund for a little bit more flexible uses. But as far as funding specifically for the bathrooms, that was the funding to continue the pit stop program at its current eight sites for one year past the six-month pilot.
Okay. Well, thank you. Well, thank you. I think, excuse me. I think, you know, we've been clamoring for additional bathrooms in the Skid Row area and areas of high concentration of homeless individuals, but there's been some reluctance because not only has it been expensive to do so, but also because people say, why do it if they're not going to be used for the appropriate use? But here, I think we're on the right path, and we also have some funding that has been allocated acknowledging the need to do that. But I think showing the success, we probably could expand it. So I would like this to, I would like to amend this report to include additional funding from we have set aside in the UB this year for emergency response in the area of Skid Row and other areas of high concentration so that we could provide attendance at three additional toilets because they're way underperforming, not being used exactly for the intended purpose, and I think this is exactly the type of solution we've been looking for. One is at Fifth and Hill above the Prosign Square metro station, which really has been overtaken by a lot of drug dealing, and people don't go near the restrooms at all. The other is at Fifth and San Julian, in front of San Julian Park, and on San Pedro, between Fifth and Sixth, in front of the Union Rescue Mission. I've added, I passed around a proposed written motion to approve funding from $420,000 from the homeless service program line item in the unappropriated balance to add attendance at the three additional automated public toilets that we've mentioned, and so hopefully we could move forward with that because this has shown to be something that is successful and is working, and there's an emergency out there, and we've been looking for a solution, and I think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank our group, Hunter's Point, and our other community partners for working with the source. This has been a real, I think, successful program, and while we only have one in nine, also an area of high concentration, I think it has been successful as- been successful as referenced because of the human element. I've had a chance to go by frequently, in fact, at the site there on 38th and Grand. And it is a, it makes a difference when you have individuals there who are welcoming, who are encouraging, and I'm hopeful that we can, in addition to the three sites you mentioned, Mr. Weezer, find money for additional sites, especially in high, high need areas because it is an alternative, it does address a need, and it does show that we are, I think, compassionately trying to address the problem on many fronts. Use of the toilet is certainly just one. It's small, but it's big. And so I'm excited that, but could you tell us a little bit about your experience in San Francisco? How many sites you're managing and kind of what that's like in terms of timing?
So we are up to 23 toilets now in San Francisco. They just added five a few weeks ago. And then Wreckin' Park is also asking us to do 10 more in the bathrooms and DPW, Department of Public Works in San Francisco, is looking to add even more. The hours vary depending on the location of the toilet. In general, we're open 12 hours per day. We're not open anywhere overnight. Also, just because you were talking about the quality of our ambassadors, I do think that this is a very, very, this is part of our secret sauce that I think everyone should know. While we allow anybody to come work for us who kind of passes the test in terms of emotional intelligence and all that kind of stuff, we prioritize former long-term offenders, also known as lifers, because they have the best, the most highly developed sense of emotional intelligence, ability to really engage people, to be able to sense danger, not to be, you know, to de-escalate things, to be able to talk to everybody. And so I think this really shows the next level of evolution in services. And quite frankly, a lot of these folks could possibly add to the unhoused population if it were not for these jobs. And in San Francisco, all of them have gone on to full-time, full-time, unsubsidized work around, and at about a year's time, we try to start cutting off. And that doesn't mean we cut anybody off, just say it's a year, you got to go. But we work through them for the entire process. So at about a year's time, they've kind of got stabilized and have gone on other job interviews and go on to the world by their first cars, apartments, that sort of thing.
Now, in San Francisco, do you have one or two ambassadors per location?
It depends. So you have the J.C. Deco's, which I think you guys are calling APTs at some of them. We also, San Francisco, which I highly recommend in Los Angeles, they got a manufacturer for the portable toilets. And so those have two units. They have an ADA accessible unit, they have a regular unit, hand washing station, and then a closet in the middle so that the ambassador can keep all their supplies, their backpacks, that sort of thing. And they, and they're flushable. So I think that helps a lot because out here, particularly because it gets so hot, after a few major uses, they get really kind of smelly. So, yeah, it depends on the location.
So, but then generally two then? At a minimum, they're two or just one? What do you mean?
It, I don't know. It's about half and half.
What are you doing down here, for example?
Down here, like, so we have three J.C. Deco's down here. I think the rest are mobile. And so typically what I've seen, and Dave can also speak, obviously, Mr. Jenkins could speak to that, but there's, I think you guys have the same, an ADA accessible, a hand washing station, and a regular one, yes.
And what, staffed by one ambassador or two ambassadors? That was a question.
One at most locations, sometimes they're overtime. And Venice is the only one where I think we've scheduled two because it's pitch black, they're in the pitch black dark, and it's overnight. And so we thought for the importance and safety of, the importance of the safety of the monitor that we have to for their safety.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to second the motion by Councilmember Weezer with the friendly amendment that we see how we can expand that so that we can fund as many additional locations as possible, not just the three limited that we suggested here today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Price. Any other comments, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you to all the folks from the departments and the agencies who've worked on this. Thank you in particular for not resisting when I urged you and pushed to do overnight in Venice. I didn't at first know that I was proposing something brand new, but it just, given that there are some bathrooms that are open during the day there, having them open at night seemed to be the missing piece there. So I'm really glad that you did that and I'm glad to hear that things, both here at this table and from what I'm hearing outside this building, are going well. And I just also wanted to thank Mr. Ambassador, Mr. Jenkins, Jenkins, is it?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to thank you. You are a phenomenal spokesperson for this program. You, your presentation nailed it. You touched on all the things that's important about this. In fact, you touched on things about this that made me feel that this was more successful, successful than, than we intended when we started this because of all the different aspects that you brought to your presentation. You know, we were looking to do something small but difficult, which was just to give somebody literally a pot to piss in. And it's more than that. And you talked about how it is more than that, both for you and for the people who use the toilets. So I just want to, I want to thank you for that. I'll be coming down to visit you and chat down at the site.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Bonin. And props to Mr. Bonin who's been fighting for these types of services and the availability of these services broadly for as long as I can remember until they hear them come to fruition and done in such a way that we actually know how many people are using the bathroom on a daily basis and what a difference it makes to have a human being there. Again, common sense, that's been validated by data, so we truly appreciate all of you being with us here today to make this report. And so we have an amendment before us that's been submitted and seconded. If there is no objections, we'll adopt that amendment. And we also have item number six in front of us, which we will adopt, hearing no objection. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Number five, and we'll ask sanitation to join us at the center table. Can we read number five into the record? She needs sound.
Item number five is a motion and a report from the Bureau of Sanitation relative to providing recreational vehicle waste pumping and dump stations for RVs on the waitlist for towing and individuals living in RVs who are enrolled in services for housing placement.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Councilmembers Adele Hosh-Khalil, Assistant General Manager for LA Sanitation. The motion that was introduced by Councilman Bloomfield and Councilman Engelder and the Chair of the Committee basically looked at RVs, and interesting, RV, unsheltered homeless individuals live in RVs. And if you look at the latest count from LSA, it identifies about 23% of the unsheltered population living in RVs and campers. LA Sanitation is committed to protecting the public health and the environment. And if an RV dumps its sewage and waste on the gutter, in the gutter, that's going to be a public health hazard and also it's a nuisance to the community, but also it's a public health concern for all of us. So we acknowledge that's something that we need to deal with. So the direction of the, your motion and the council is to look at the RV and how we can assist in managing that process while we are building bridges to have people go to shelters and have homeless individuals are in shelters and addressing their issues and provide them a place to be housed. First of all, the first thing we looked at is, can we provide mobile service to the RVs? And our staff looked at it and there was a concern, a concern from a safety and also from a public health. Most RVs have their service on the driver's side of the RV. And so that means the, anything has to be done, has to be done in the, in the street, which can be a hazard to a lot of the workers. Plus also it provides its liability for the city and also many of the connections are not standard and that creates an issue. So as an alternative, what we looked at is, can we provide, one, a voucher system, and the second is, can we provide locations for these RVs to find a place to dispose their waste in? But I want to stress, one issue is if an RV is disabled or leaking or is being towed by LAPD or DOT and it's leaking or it's, there's an issue with the sewage on it, sanitation right now is called and we respond and we address it and we remove the waste prior to that RV being moved by LAPD or DOT. So that's been taken care of. Six years ago or so, there was a huge issue with RVs in Venice. I know Councilman Bonin was involved at the time. We identified a location at the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant and that was opened up for RV disposal. That was built and we have that available. We also had a concentration of RVs in the San Pedro area and we opened one of our yards, the Gaff Yard, to allow for that to happen. We built a special area to dispose of this RV and that is in place right now. Looking at this citywide, we believe that we probably should do a pilot to expand this more and move somewhere towards the mid part of the city and the valley. And so we looked at adding a location in our north central solid waste yard in Council District One in Lincoln Heights. And that's something that we're going to add with your approval, your concurrence in the council and committee. And then we're looking at something in the San Fernando Valley and working with Councilman Bloomfield's office, we're going to try to see if we can use one of our sanitation yards in Reseda to have that be equipped with the ability to receive RVs for disposal. So it's a combination of having four locations provided by the city for the RVs to dispose of their waste, plus also coming up with a voucher system. We'll work with the council offices and also the service providers to have those available to be provided to allow the RV owner that is needing that service to use that to go to a private disposal facility. Funding is a concern. There's no funding for this, however, LA Sanitation has committed to utilizing our sewer construction and maintenance fund in the interim to build the two locations in the Lincoln Heights area and also in Reseda at a cost roughly around $150,000 for construction, $75,000 each. And then we're going to staff it up one day a week and the staffing will be also absorbed with the effort somewhere around the end of the year to reconcile the cost and make the sewer construction and maintenance fund whole and make it, address this funding. We're looking at about $26,000 in vouchers. We estimate about 20 RVs will use the voucher system. So we're going to contract to get these commercial vouchers to hand out through your offices and also through the service providers. So our recommendation is to move forward with the two locations as an additional expansion and a pilot and then continue looking citywide. And one of the ideas is looking as we build new facilities for sanitation, that that gets integrated into it, so it's not something that's an add-on. We will look into that effort and then the RV voucher system will allocate $26,000 for the vouchers. With that, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
All right. If there are any questions or comments? I don't see any. I would put forward a amending instruction that asks that we look at one or two additional sites as per the recommendation of sanitation. I'll put that forward as a motion if I can get a second, spin second it. So I've got a couple public comment cards here, Cecilia Castillo and Rosa Max.
Hi. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Just here, Cecilia Castillo from Councilmember Bob Bloomfield's office, just to express support for the recommendations for the voucher system and the construction of the two new sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Max.
One minute?
Yes.
All right. WWW, kaboom, greenzone.la copied the district maps of the green zones that are in question right now. I think there is a way to put trailers with sanitation stations behind them of construction toilets. I've been testing it. And there are bids right now of construction companies that are using these toilets on city construction sites and maybe you can cut a deal with them and at least we can get some people off the street with these heatwaves hitting us.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Hopefully we can, you can connect with somebody from.
We're testing them in the green zones in Silver Lake right now. We've already done it.
Got it. Thank you so much. All right. So we have an amendment before us that's up, hearing no objection, we'll adopt that as well as the item. Number four, we'll adopt that as well, hearing no objection. That brings us to item number four, Englander Cedillo. If we could read that into the record.
Item four is a motion, Englander Cedillo, relative to determining the Los Angeles World Airport's own parcels located at 8300 North Havenhurst Place in North Hills are viable for use as a storage facility for the homeless, including the use of temporary modular offices, storage containers, and/or vehicles which accommodate bins or other containers.
Excellent. Thank you. So this is a storage facility in North Hills, brought forward by Councilmember Englander. If there's no discussion, we'll take that item on consent, hearing none, that'll be the order. Item number three, we will receive and file that one. And then item number two, item number two, if you could read that into the record.
Item number two is a motion, Harris-Dawson-Bonin, relative to evaluating the city-owned parcel located on properties at St., South St. Andrews Place to determine if the parcel is suitable for development as a crisis and bridge housing facility.
Excellent. So three parcels in Council District Eight. I have one speaker on this, Juan Acosta. Going once, twice, three times, no Mr. Acosta. So if we could take this item on consent, hearing no objection, that'll be the order. Item number one.
Item number one is a motion, Buscaino-Harris-Dawson, relative to the evaluation of the following three sites in Council District 15 to be suitable for development as a crisis and bridge housing facility, one on East Imperial Highway, one on Eubanks Avenue, one on North Beacon Street. Also, since the posting of this agenda, Wilmington Neighborhood Council has submitted a community impact statement.
Thank you. Is there anybody here representing the Wilmington Neighborhood Council? If you are, you should, can you come forward because we give you extended time to speak? You're not going to speak? Okay. Thank you. All right. So folks, we've got 29 speakers on this. You have a minute each. I'm going to ask you all to line up and so we can get through this quickly. It's totally fine to say I concur with the previous speakers and your name and where you live if you want to, if you don't want to be repetitive and you want to help us get through this. But we want to make sure everybody that showed up. But we want to make sure everybody that showed up and has been a part of this hearing gets the opportunity to be recognized. So I'll start off with the first name, Cynthia Xenios. I could be mispronouncing that, I apologize. Adolfo Fermin, Michael Toxting, Jose Alanis. If you all could come on up, and we're eager to hear from you. You can come in any order, you don't have to come in the order I called you, just come on up and get going. You just gotta be one of the people that I called. And I called Cynthia, Adolfo, Michael, and Jose.
Hello. First, I'd like to say it's an honor and a privilege to speak here today, so if I'm a little nervous, please forgive me.
You're doing great.
Oh, God, not anymore. Okay. It's difficult for...
Tell me your name.
My name's Regina Martinez.
Regina Martinez, you're not on the list yet.
Oh, I've signed up twice.
Yeah, but we'll get to you. Don't worry about it. It's all right. You got a, you got a good practice run, though.
Yes, my name is Cynthia Xenios, and I'm giving my time to my husband to speak.
Can't, sorry, we can't give time. You have to speak or not speak.
Well, I'm against the housing address, we don't want the homeless at that address.
Which one?
The U-Bank.
Because there are three right here.
Okay, the one in Wilmington, it's on U-Bank.
The one in Wilmington, got it. Thank you so much.
Against it.
Hello, my name is Adolfo Fermin. I'm a business owner in Wilmington, and I'm against having whatever is happening here with the homeless in Wilmington. I have ordinance number 185490. I have looked through it, and it doesn't mention anything about having food trucks there, recycling, medical, mental health, handicap, non-gender restrooms, family camps, minors, security for community, more officers, more paramedics, more social workers, biometrics database, and also immigration status, US citizenship, green card holders, and it's bad for business. Long Avalon Boulevard, we have to be like prisoners on Avalon Boulevard. That's a hassle, you know? And first of all, you should take care of your backyard first. On the way over here, I smell urine. And in your bathrooms here, out of seven bathrooms, four didn't work. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Toxting. I live in Wilmington, and I'm concerned about the problems that already exist in Wilmington, and that you moving these folks in, bless their heart, I know they have issues, but it's gonna amplify the problems that already exist in Wilmington. We have all kinds of types of pollution, crime, overcongestion, you know, we have the harbor. You should appreciate the harbor because it's a cash cow for the city of LA. You should be taking much better care of the city of Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Alanis. I'm coming regarding because I'm against this bridge housing, you know, because I'm gonna be affected. I live in 1141 U-Bank, so pretty much away from the side of 828 U-Bank Avenue, Wilmington. So I totally don't accept this, because all of my, even my neighbors, you know, around that area, you know, we don't approve it, because it's gonna, we see a lot of, a lot of disease, I mean, a lot of needles, and all that stuff from homeless, you know, and trash, and everything, it's nasty, you know? And we don't want this program, this thing, this project, we want to do in our side, you know? I mean, how come they don't do it in their, in their front of their houses? Yeah, it's cool for you guys, I mean, okay, let's do it, you know? But how come they don't do it in front of their yard, you know? I mean, that's the way I see it, simple as that, you know? I mean, but yeah, like, we all, Wilmington, you know, we always gotta, you know, do for the home, things for the homeless, you know? All you guys can do is their part, you know?
Thank you. All right, so we have Olga Alanis, Anne Ruth Babic, Lupe Zuniga, Zwiniga, and someone named Leslie. There is, for folks coming up, a couple questions have come up. The, there are team members here from Council District Fifteen that have frequently asked questions that address some of the things that are brought up. So folks can get that document or talk with people on this side of the room. Come on up.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Olga Alanis. I don't like that proposal that the homeless is going to get near to our house. I have grandsons, they're, sometimes they scare them, sometimes they just cross in my driveway, really, it's scary for them. And there, I sometimes I've found needles and condoms in my front yard there. So please, I wish that not happened to our Wilmington.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Bobic, and I've been a resident of Wilmington for 41 years. I used to live in San Pedro for 28 years, so I'm a South Bay girl there. I'm not for this encampment there in U-Bank. I'd like to have it shut down. Environmental, it's not even environmentally fit to have anything like that. You could see, obviously, here in LA, I know that you're not turning a blind eye, but you have like the Fred Jordan mission thing, and people are getting help, but the people are encamped outside. That's what is gonna happen there in Wilmington. They're gonna get their little help that they want, and then they encamp all the surroundings. You're gonna need toilets like what you're trying to get the budget for, which is great, but no, no in Wilmington, it's not fit for the residents of Wilmington. And I wanted to keep it healthy.
Thank you. So we had Lupe and Leslie, Helena Zuvik, Gail Fleury, Jaime Bedoya.
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie. I'm against the homeless people that live around my area. I own a property, and next to it, there's, there's the homeless, and we've been trying to leave, make him leave for about two years, and he doesn't even stealing our water and our, our power. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helena Zuvich, and I oppose the property on U-Bank for the homeless. I'm opposing for my grandson that will be growing up in the city, and I oppose for the other residents of Wilmington.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gail Fleury, and I speak for a committee of homeowners, business owners, and residents in the area of San Pedro near 515 Beacon Street. The city has spent a huge amount of money on beautifying the entry into San Pedro, it's where the cruise ships come, we've got the new public market. It would be a total waste to put homeless shelter on the 515 lot, and have it be the very first thing that is seen coming into the new welcome-to-San Pedro area. It also impacts the businesses downtown, as well as my business, and I speak also for the lady who owns my building, who's nearly 90 and cannot be here to speak for herself. People are very angry and upset about this, and we would ask respectfully that you take this off the list of recommended places to be considered.
My name is Jaime Bedoya. I'm a resident of Wilmington, and I'm really opposed to the site on U-Bank Avenue. We already have enough problems, and I think that the council should take their time, and we should find a better place that we can put the homeless and help them. We're not opposed to helping the homeless, but that is in the middle of a neighborhood next to a baseball where our kids play and everything, and we're just, you know, a couple hundred feet from the houses. So we really need to have this place moved from that list, and find a suitable area that's away from residents' homes and playgrounds for our kids. Thank you.
All right, Simi Seaman, Mr. and Ms. Seaman, Valerie Contreras, George Xenios.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Simi Seaman. I live at 1217 Lackey Avenue in Wilmington, and I'm here to represent Wilmington's Lives Matter and Citizens for a Better Wilmington. I would like to go on record today that we oppose the site at, on U-Bank, and I would like to submit over 1,000 signatures petitions that I brought today for people that could not come here today to take off of work. I'd like to submit this into our record, 1,000.
Thank you, the deputy will take those.
Okay. Also, this particular proposal by our councilman was not brought to the community to have a public input on this. We had to hold our own town hall meeting to have this facility discussed with. And there, we had people, everybody had a loud voice, we don't want it here, it's inappropriate here. You're talking about the site at, on Beacon Street? That's Caltrans. Caltrans told us that there's no way in hell that that's gonna go through. They'll take you to court. We talked to the Caltrans people for that. So to me, that was a false pretense of bringing...
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. You gotta get, you gotta let the next person speak. Yes?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, councilmembers, committee members. My name is Valerie Contreras.
Valerie, okay, great, thank you.
I'm here to represent my community of Wilmington with my Neighborhood Watch Group. I kindly ask you for my two minutes. I kindly ask you for my two minutes, as everybody else who came to the mic, please. Okay. We're here for the citizens, by the citizens, okay? We would like you to listen, please, listen to the residents of Wilmington. The reason why we're predominantly industrial is because you did not give us zoning, because we're connected to the port, who by the way dumps on us, okay? It's not suitable for us to live there, and it's not suitable for the homeless to live there, okay? We do not oppose homeless people. As a matter of fact, we have three homeless shelters in Wilmington, a pregnancy shelter, we have many housing, sober living, we feed over 105 meals a day, our churches provide clothing. Everybody in Wilmington is compassionate to homeless. We oppose this U-Bank site.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is George Xenios. I'm a lifelong resident of Wilmington. I'm getting sick and tired of Wilmington being dumped on. We look like a third world dump. First, it's containers, then it's semi-trucks, chassis, and everything else we get. We get no service there at all. Now you want to dump these homeless on us. These people back here that love these homeless, put them where they live. Put them up in rolling hills, up there in Palos Verdes, put them up there. Just spread the wealth here a little bit. Why are we always getting dumped on? We get no service at all, and we're sick and tired of these people get dumped, we get dumped on. Now we can give these homeless, and it's right next to John Mendez Ballpark. And those guys will be right behind them, pedophiles, rapists, and everything, just sitting there, be drooling to see those kids out there on those ball field. And we're sick of this crap. We're sick of getting dumped. And where's Buscaino at? Why is he here? Where's he at? He's probably at a birthday party, an excuse not to be here, not to face all those people. And that's how he is. He took up where Janice Han left off.
Thank you. That's your time. Maria Couch, Regina Martinez, Leslie Rosco, Luis Peseño. And Luis, you'll be our last speaker.
I'll start over, okay? Again, I would like to kindly request my two minutes. It's a privilege and honor to be here today. I came here today hoping to be able to address my councilmember. He's not here, and he's always absent. The people in my community do not oppose the homeless.
Can you stop the time?
Thank you so much.
Stop the time. I just want to explain on behalf of our colleague, councilmember Buscaino, he is not a member of the Homeless and Poverty Committee. When this goes before the full council, Mr. Buscaino will be here, as he's the mover of the motion, but it is not customary for members who are not members of a committee to show up. We run into a problem where we might break quorum, because if too many of us are in the room at one time, it's against the law. So that's, I just want to say that, because a couple people have raised that. You can go on, thank you.
May I get my two minutes, please?
I'm sorry, folks, folks have asked for two minutes. Two minutes are for the people who signed up for multiple items. So if you sign up for one item, you get one minute, but some people that we took in the beginning, they signed up for five or six items, so they're limited to two minutes. So that's why you're getting one minute, and they got two.
Okay. So in any event, it's not that we're against the homeless, it's, we don't know what we're getting. There's been no community outreach. We, he's, he's, he's on vacation, his whole staff is on vacation two weeks ago. We had a petition, and that's what got our attention, to get somebody to come talk to us. We don't know the size, the scope, how do we guarantee it's only for a couple years? And then the site itself has problems. It's a methane zone. It's on a fault line. It's by your own county, city council file, it's not fit for habitation or development. We have concerns, as you can see here. We're not unreasonable. We want it done right. He could have taken what could have been a win-win situation, and have people supporting him, and now it's an opposition, and it didn't have to be that way.
Good afternoon. My name's Maria Couch. I'm a board member of the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, but today I'm here as a stakeholder. I completely agree with the members that have already spoken. If this is not against homeless individuals, we have a crisis, we need help, but the fact is that our, the, our leaders are not there to talk to us, to let us know. I've gone to a few meetings with working groups for the Bridge Home Project, and a lot of the messaging is contradictory. So that also becomes an issue, where you hear one thing, and then someone else hears something different, and it doesn't mix. So my recommendation is that you create an MOU, wherever the site, if the site is chosen, create an MOU with the surrounding businesses, the church, the school, councilman, mayor's office, and the neighborhood council where the jurisdiction is, and outline everything, detail everything, what will make it be, because they've told us, we'll pull the plug if it doesn't work. We'll write it down, what consists of it not working? Come to an agreement of what is wrong, when it's wrong, and then that way the, this community knows, and the councilman can be held accountable to what is, when it needs to get pulled.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Good afternoon. My name is Luis Piseño. I'm from Wilmington. I've been in Wilmington for 60 years. And the reason I oppose to this relocating these individuals in Wilmington is because the quantity of people that are trying, that they are trying to relocate. We are a very small community, and we are not against homeless. We would like to help them, but only our Wilmington homeless. I don't see a reason why we have to take care of the people of Southern California, of the homeless from Southern California. We understand, there is a problem, and again, we have a responsibility, but only our, our people, only our homeless. The others, communities should take care of their own, and that's how I feel. I, my house is about two blocks from this site that they are selected, and that's the reason we are, not because I'm, I'm the only one, but everybody is against Wilmington.
Finish your sentence. Thank you. All right, Ms. Rosa Max. Will be our final speaker.
Hello. So, yeah, I'd like to respond to that. It's hard. I, I'm homeless in Silver Lake since last March I was evicted after another screw-up in Department 94. So I'm a single mother with a four and a five-year-old, and would love to stay in Silver Lake, but we're red-zoned out of our green zone, so we have to come to more welcoming places, and I'm looking into Park RV close to the basketball court, so my son can practice his basketball, and it's difficult if the city doesn't let richer communities take care of their homelessness, because by bucket vetoes, everything is vetoed out in the neighborhood councils, then we end up in more welcoming places, and maybe with some composting toilets, city farms, vacant lots. Mr. Dawson knows, I've been recruiting plenty youth for the city hall and for the neighborhood councils. Everybody wants to work and farm. We can figure this out on lower budgets.
Thank you so much. All right, questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. Mr. Bonin.
Just one note, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make sure the folks from Wilmington understand that they were heard today, and I just wanted to point out that the council isn't today taking an action to approve anything in Wilmington. Mr. Buscaino's motion is simply asking city...
Hold on, hold on, people didn't interrupt when you were speaking, so don't interrupt when the member's speaking.
Mr. Buscaino's motion is asking the city departments to analyze the potential for three sites. That will get reported back to the council and to the public, and there'll be further discussion. All he's doing today is saying, let's look at these sites. It's the beginning... It's the beginning of the conversation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonin. My comment is exactly, exactly, I just want to point out, this is, we heard a lot about Wilmington, but it's one of four sites in the city that are being proposed today. Others have been proposed prior to this and we expect to propose more and in each case, the sites have to be analyzed and tested to see whether or not this is actually feasible. So if, if some of the things that folks said are correct, that'll come out in the evaluation process. Also, I would just remind everybody that there's a very good FAQ, frequently asked questions form that the Council District Fifteen has produced in English and in Spanish and it speaks to a lot of the issues that were raised here and there will be more opportunity to discuss this matter as we go forward. And so if there is no objection, we'll take this item on consent and send it on to council. And where does that leave us with regards to today's business?
Did you do general public comment?
We did general public comment in the beginning.
Then there's no other items.
Excellent, no other items. We're adjourned. Thank you all so much.